Roll call and the seating of alternates, I see Anne Pramay is with us. Leanne Hutchinson is here. I don't see Steve Nelson. And I don't see Scott Person.
Scott may be at the, at the community center meeting.
Okay, yep, I talked to him earlier, he thought that he would be here, but but be that as it may, and so with that, Susan, I'm going to see you as an alternate for Scott.
Okay.
And I'm here, and so we've got the quorum. And I just got So anyhow, that's, that's our lineup for tonight, Anne, Leanne, Susan, and me. Additions or changes to the agenda? Alan, we, we were starting to talk just a little bit about the sequencing of events, we, as you know, we got a proposed amendment to the original application with respect to a restoration plan. That came in late last week and maybe, maybe some early this week that we got to see all that, so. We've got that, I, I would think that we would accept that as an item, Alan, and then go into executive session and discuss the way ahead.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, so what, what I'll do is make a motion to change the agenda by eliminating item five. The executive session. Will, under new business, we will put, receive amendment to gravel pit application. And then item seven will go into executive session.
Well, we might, uh, excuse me Jed.
Yep, good.
I, I'm thinking we, we may want to go into executive session first. Because I mean, it's all related to the you know, enforcement of the remediation plan. So I, I think it's, it's fairly within the you know, pending litigation, which doesn't have to be about pending litigation. Pending litigation can be about, you know, inco it claims that the commission may, may have. Because what we talk about there may affect how we proceed, so we may not want to accept that amendment until it's clear that that's the best way to go forward.
Okay, I, I got you, and had some of those thoughts and so anyhow, I withdraw, I will withdraw my original motion. And I'll make a new motion that under new business, we put receive amendment to the gravel pit application. I'll leave item seven executive session in there, just in case we need to go back for anything. But we'll do the executive session first, then receive the application, and then we'll, we'll leave the rest of the agenda as it is. And so that's the motion. I would need a second to that motion.
Seconded.
Thank you, Anne. And then any discussion on the motion?
So I will, Jed, well, you will do this with a breakout room, I assume, same as last time?
Yes.
So what I'll need is a list of people who are going into executive session and essentially who on the, the, the call is excluded. After I pause the recording, I'll invite obviously yourself.
Yep, so.
So who, who's coming?
So it'll be all of the, all of the commission members.
Okay.
All the alternate members.
So we have, we have the non, the non-commission members, there's someone on the phone with the phone number seven, seven four two five four seven five, I do not know who that is. And then we have Anne Marie Dagel as well.
Yep, I saw Anne Marie just joined us, and Scott Person is on his way, he he's going to be a minute or two late, so. So the, the one phone number that you had mentioned, I don't know who that is either, so.
That's me, Leanne Hutchinson.
Oh, oh, okay. Leanne, I'll merge, I'll merge you with the the video, just so we get it all together.
So say, say the number you were talking about again, John, because I, I saw a different number pop up from what I thought was.
It was a seven four two number, but that's Leanne, so I just merged her audio with her video, so, so it's all set.
Okay.
So, so I, is, is Jim and Alan, I assume, are invited?
Jim and Alan and you, yep.
And then so Anne Marie is the only one not invited?
Nope, she is, here is an alternate.
Well, she's an alternate, I'm sorry, Anne Marie.
And, and I would seat her as an alternate, but Scott Person said he's on the way. And so we'll, we'll go with that, when we get that, and I see somebody else, maybe it's Marina's connecting. I see the town of Andover seal.
Yeah, so at this point, is everyone, am I excluding anyone?
Catherine Hutchinson would not be able to attend.
Oh, okay, sorry, right, right, okay. I get my Hutchinsons merged.
Yeah.
Okay, so with, with apologies to Catherine, I think we went through this last time, I'll everyone will jump out into a and, and so I, I don't know if this, is that Marina?
It's either Marina or Eric.
Or Eric, yeah, oh.
Town of Andover is me.
Okay, we got Eric here, Eric will be invited to the executive session as well, and Scott Person is here. Scott, you're in the attendance. The only commission member missing is Steve Nelson and Susan England is seated for him.
Okay, so that was, we're still in discussion, I, I know who's going in, so once you approve your motion, I'll pause the recording and bring everyone out to the breakout room.
Well, we'll do, we'll do the public comment first, and then we'll go to the executive session.
Okay.
So, that, that'll be how that works, so.
Jed, do you have to shuffle the alternate position around? Didn't you see Susan in place of Scott?
Yeah, that's what you said, I was doing Scott.
Okay, so now Susan, you're seated for Steve Nelson.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
And so we, we had a motion. And we got a second on the motion. And so this month, we're going to vote on the motion. We didn't do that last month, so. Anne, Pramay?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Scott? Looking for a vote on the motion?
He just disappeared.
He just disappeared.
He didn't want to face the hard questions, I guess.
No, he loves those hard questions. I'll come back in, Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Looking to see if Scott popped back in here?
If if he does, I'll, I'll bring him over to the executive session.
Okay, so at this point, the motion passed four zero zero. Next up on the agenda is public comment. And Ms. Hutchinson, if you had any comments that you wanted to make at this point, you're welcome to.
Yes, just on my usual request that I would like to reserve any comment or question until the gravel pit discussion comes up. And then secondly, is it easier for everybody if I log off and somebody just lets me know when you're out of your executive session? Would that be easier if I'm the only one on?
No, I think it, I, I mean, we could, we could do that also, but I think it's better to invite specific people, because there's, there's no.
Somebody can log in at any time.
Right, somebody could log in at any time, and then we would have to boot them, so we'll, we'll segregate the, the commission.
All right.
Good thought, though.
Okay, Scott, I'm, I see you're back with us, we had a motion to add receipt of of the amendment to the application for the gravel pit after we go to executive session. And you didn't get a chance to vote on that. If you wanted to vote to accept that change, now's a good time to do that.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so the motion passes five zero zero. Okay, so we are, are done with public comment, and at this point, John, I think we'll transition to executive session. And you, you had gotten Eric was on, on the list of folks to go there with us as well, didn't you?
I do, okay, so I'm about to, I'm about to pause the recording, and then you will all get an invitation to jump over.
Hold on, just a minute, just a minute. I need to make a motion.
Okay.
That we go to executive session. Then, so I will make a motion to enter executive session, inviting all commission members, alternate members, Jim Halcy, Alan Kurtow, Eric Anderson, and John Gaskowski.
Second.
Thank you, Leanne. I'll call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes five zero zero, now, John, we can go to executive session. Okay? And I think everybody made it back, I was looking for
Hello?
England. And
Okay, this is Leanne, I'm, I got disconnected for at least five minutes. What, what is going on now, and I had asked a question that was in the process of being answered, I'm not sure what happened to my reception.
Um, well, I think as soon as we get back to the meeting, it will be clear to you what we're doing, if you have questions, we can entertain them, then I I don't want to go back into executive session because I didn't know that we lost you there. But I think it will be clear. And, and I see that Susan England is back with us now, okay, so we have everybody and and I apologize if there's a, a better way to handle that, Leanne, but I'm not sure what it is at this point.
Okay.
And, and I think I think it'll be clear what what's going on there. So.
I hope so, because that was part of my question when I got disconnected.
So we are on item six, new business. Receive amendment to the gravel pit application. And on that, on that amendment to the application, I would propose that the commission take no action tonight, other than to ask Jim to assess the completeness of the application and report to us on that at the next meeting. I'm not making a motion to take no action, so if anybody's got comments on that, now's the, the time that we can discuss that.
Perhaps that gets back to what I was asking when I got disconnected was, I think Attorney Kurtow was re-explaining the difference between a modification and a clarification and how that affects what we do.
Okay, yep, and I think, so again, that the application came in is a modification. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're treating it as a modification, not the the initial thing. I don't know if you heard my example of the the change that we did, which we considered a minor change to put the gazebo on the property out there on Route Six, just as you come into Andover, and
No, I did not.
Yeah, the, you know, the applicant came in, briefed us, we, we made the determination then that it was not a substantive change and went about our business. I think you know, this came in as a modification with the new application, and, and that's that, that controls the direction that we're going to head. And I just think that's the most prudent course of action at this point. So Jim will let us know at the next meeting if it's a complete application, if it is, we can determine when, when we want to schedule a public hearing, if that's the way we want to go. Or if it's not, we'll, we'll determine what to do with that then. Hopefully that clears it up a little bit, Leanne.
A, a bit anyway, yeah, I, I see your use of the I, I guess I understand. I'm still not completely clear, because it seems to not be what we started out talking about earlier, as far as we're clarification, but I understand what you just said about it came in being called a modification, so you're using that word now.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So Jim, you got for action to, to give us an assessment on the completion. Got that, Jim? Jim, did you hear me, you're muted if you were.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, and Alan, I, I think you got us through the hard spot of the night. You, you're certainly welcome to hang on for our plan of conservation and development discussion, but that's probably not.
Well, it's probably, it's probably not a good use of your money, so if you don't need me, I'll I'll, I'll take my leave.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so next up was the discussion on the plan of conservation and development. And I asked everybody to, you know, come prepared to to, you know, tell us what it is that you would, you know, 10 years from now, what it is you'd like to see in Andover that we don't currently have. And if there's anything that you would be concerned about in years into the future. And so with that in mind, who wants to go first? I know everybody's got to hop on the easy one, so. Leanne, you, you, you're on the screen as being, you know, ready to talk, you're, what was your thoughts?
Are you just saying that? I'm on the screen as what, being ready to talk?
Yep, your name was, was the main screen, so it was like you were trying to say something, I think it was a holdover from your previous comment, but but that's what it shows.
Yeah, I, I show a different screen now, although at least now I can hear you again. But I'm not, I'm not seeing what you're seeing. As far as something I'd like to see in 10 years, or over the next 10 years?
Yep, that's the question.
Let's see, this, this calls for more than one thing.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just putting this up so I can take notes together, I, that's fine.
I think a lot remains to be seen, I mean, I have been thinking about this since you emailed us and asked us. And I wasn't sure, and I, maybe I should have asked you earlier, if you meant, you know, what did we think based on the results of the survey, or, you know, or what did we think, just without that or both? I would say every time we do one of these updates of the P O C D, people say that they want the town to stay the way it is as far as the rural character and things like that. You know, these are usually suggestions for relatively small retail stores, you know, nobody ever wants a big box store, most people don't mind driving to another town for most of their purchases, you know, they usually want something small. And I think since the senior and community center isn't even open yet, that's going to be a difference in, you know, having that as a resource, but since it's not open yet, I think that, you know, a lot remains to be seen as far as how that plays out for recreation and for the seniors.
Okay. Anything that you're concerned about, Leanne? Anything that you're concerned about, Leanne?
I can hear an echo now. Well, it wasn't, if I recall, too much of an issue on the survey results. I'm just always concerned about crime anywhere, which we don't have too much of a problem with in Andover, but I'd like to keep it that way as far as and, you know, even if it's something that not that anything would exclude anything else, but, you know, that's always a concern of mine, and you know, we, we see some requests for increased enforcement on Route Six. To speeding and endangering others is a crime in itself, you know, it's a different type of crime other than you know, residential or something like that, but I, I, right now, I don't, I guess I don't see anything else being a huge issue that we have to solve in the next 10 years, you know, an overriding issue.
Okay. Did you want to include anything about what's special about Andover that should be protected and enhanced?
Well, the, the Hop River is always a big one. I think that, you know, we have a nice, a nice trail system. And, you know, just farmland. No, I think enhanced, we're going to get that with the senior center, hopefully once we have staffing and, and programs in place, a lot of that will be addressed as far as enhancement to the town.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I think that's a good start. Who wants to go second?
I can go.
Okay, thank you, Anne.
Um, I guess what I'd like to see over the next 10 years is to have more choices in housing. I'd like to see things like the senior housing that you see like being built in Hebron. Where there's maybe like, you know, two-bedroom homes, they might be attached at a time, or they might be all separate, it doesn't matter, but to have a way of getting senior housing like that. Townhomes type things, you know, two or three connected as a townhome, I think also is good. Um, I'm hoping we do have more families, I'm seeing some more families, you know, young families with kids coming in. I'd like to see more of that. And I'd really like to see more businesses. And both the small businesses, like maybe small banks or gift shop, like more gift shops that over Andover is great, but we need more in the small businesses. Could be like on Route 316, Center Street, those areas, I'm wondering if we need to change the zoning to make it easier to do things like that, because with our strictly rural zoning in that area now, it's pretty hard to encourage people to do that, because they're just going to say, well, we can't do it, and they don't understand how you can go about changing it. And I wouldn't mind seeing slightly bigger doors also, I mean, I don't want to see a Walmart, but I think of the size of the, like a Highland Park side store. The stores like you see up there on Route 44 in, in Coventry, or things you see down on 66 in Hebron. That type of thing is what I'd like to see in Andover.
And we, like, those larger scale things, maybe something the size of a pharmacy or a Highland Park, that, you'd, you'd put that along six, or are you suggesting that might be appropriate?
Probably be along six. Yeah, probably along, because that's our main road, I don't know, 316 is a possibility, I suppose. But there's more houses along there, which would make them easier to to have the smaller scale type shops than those. Real estate, doctors' offices, gift shops, bank. You know, that kind of thing. That's really what I was hoping to see Andover get in the next 10 years. What I'm most concerned about, I think that we are stagnant and don't change, I think we do need to change. It's been too much in the last 20 years, nothing has changed. There's hardly anything. The Dollar General, the only thing that's come in really in that time. And actually, things up there at the Andover Plaza closed, you know, so there's less there, there had been, that's what I'm concerned about. And things that are special. I guess the people are great, and that's probably what I like the best.
Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
Scott, you want to go next?
Anne, you know, what I was going to say about the affordable or senior housing, I would say that that's what I would like to see more of. What am I most concerned about, that we never changed the regulation about building in the flood plain? Ian, what's special about Andover should be protected and enhanced, of course, it's Hop River.
Okay. I'm just going down my list here. Susan?
Okay, um what, what are the first question?
Yep, what do you want to see 10 years from now?
What I'd like to see, okay, what I'd like to see 10 years from now, a lot of it is said, I would like to see variety in housing, I'd like to see, as Anne had mentioned, duplexes, I would like to see apartments to bring in affordable housing, you know, young workers right out of college that they can afford to live here. And make it easier perhaps to have apartments in how existing buildings, because some of the old farmhouses are so large, you could easily, you know, put an apartment in there very comfortably. I would like to see more recruitment, you know, in, in quotes, of younger families, because this leads, my biggest concern is that Andover is aging out too quickly, I remember 10 years ago, we were second I remember ten years ago, we were the second oldest town in the, in the state. I think that we need to bring in more young people and um, provide opportunities for the seniors to um, live in, in smaller housing, make it more, make it easier for them, but also have available to the younger families places that, that they can move to that are affordable. And then I would also, oh, yeah, we've mentioned activities. What, what I find special about Andover is the, the rail trail is fantastic. I think that's something that can be built on, uh, you know, perhaps having a little coffee shop or something along it. And then I think that um, kind of going along with what Ann had said about gift shops. What I've been seeing, because I have grandchildren, is that that dance studio draws a lot of people into town. And what, what's interesting is the parents all seem to go to the um, Andover Pizza, and that draws a lot of business into Andover Pizza. Taking something like that, maybe concentrating on making Andover somewhat of an arts community or, or working on that. Because there are a lot of very creative people in town. So, kind of like taking the whole gift shop, but also different types of arts, performance, painting, whatever, and try to maybe set up a first community in town.
Do you have any concerns, Susan?
Uh, yeah, my concern was the aging. I'm, I'm very concerned about the aging population and the lack of housing, both for seniors, forcing them to stay in age and place, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but, but it, it does reduce the housing stock for, for younger families to come in. And I think it's really critical to start rebuilding um, and reattracting the younger families. When I, when I came here, there were a lot of young families, and that was what made it attractive to us, but, you know, forty years ago.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Anne Marie?
Uh, sorry, I'm not able to get my camera on tonight, but I'm here. Things that I would like to see in ten years, um, I would like to see more service businesses. You know, right now, you have to drive to Hebron or Coventry to get your haircut, or um, go to the bank, et cetera, um, go to a doctor's office. So maybe some things like that. Also, you know, some maybe mom and pop type restaurants, nothing that is like a chain, but more like um, you know, a independent. I, I mean, I, I actually like to see the whole Andover Plaza like revamped. I think there is a lot of potential there to do something um, on that property. But um, I also agree with the affordable housing for people of all ages. Um, maybe attract some younger families into Andover. Um, that's probably it for the um, the wants, but um, I, I like Susan's idea of the, the arts and things too. But um, concerns, I mean, I like to keep the small-town charm that we have. So maybe concentrate the, you know, the growth on Route Six, so you're not taking, you know, the, the space in the historic area. Um, and, and that's really what I like about Andover, just the small-town feel that we have. And of course, you know, the people that are in it, so. That's all I got.
Okay. Now, I think, so I think I called on everybody that's here tonight. I guess when, when I look through here, you know, my, my biggest want was the uh, small, affordable, senior housing developments. And uh, yeah, and I'm going to jump down to what's, what's special about Andover that be, should be protected. And, and I kind of like, you know, and we've all said it, the rural environment. And for most people, you know, when they, all they see of Andover is driving through on Route Six. And, and so my concern is, you know, if we develop too much on Route Six, is, is that development, can it cost us more than, than we gain by doing that? Because, you know, we, we, we know we've got the Christmas tree farm for sale out there. And I hate to see that go. I like seeing all the Christmas trees. I like seeing the farms along Route Six, so. There's, there's two sides. I know we'd all like to see a little development. But I don't know that, that I get too upset about having to drive to Hebron, or, you know, Bolton, or whatever, to uh, to get something. I, I don't know that I'm willing to trade the uh, the pastoral rural views along Route Six, you know, to uh, to save two minutes on my uh, on my trip there. But, but I really liked driving through Andover on Route Six and, and the views that, that we had there. And so uh, that's something I think we need to, to be careful and protect, you know, and the conversations that, that I've had with Eric. Certainly, you know, we all think we want development so that we can keep the taxes in line. And uh, and Eric is, you know, convinced me that putting in a couple of new, new stores in that isn't really going to solve the tax budget deal for us. It, it just isn't going to help that much to make a big deal difference. You know, when, what's special about Andover? I, I like just, you know, my, my ability to walk around the lake every day. It's, it's just a beautiful walk. And uh, you know, I, if I thought about, you know, moving to a different senior living community or something, I'd be giving that up. And I'm not sure I'm willing to give that up yet, so uh, the, I, I think, you know, under concerns, we need to, to address climate change. You know, and again, this part of, part of this is through various discussions that, that Eric's, you know, I've heard Eric talk on, on different things. But, you know, the storm intensity has really increased over the last couple of years. And uh, you know, we need to make sure that the infrastructure is, is ready to do that. I'm getting significant erosion at my house because of all the big storms. I'm concerned about, you know, when sitting through all the budget meetings, I'm concerned about the ability to uh, to be affordable, to even to those that are living here in the future, when, you know, we're, we're trying to put money away for the big projects and capital expenses. But, you know, one of the themes that came out in the budget meetings was, we recognized we weren't putting enough away to do that. And so uh, you know, we will continue to make ourselves a little more, more unaffordable. And I think the way we solve that is by bringing the housing in, bringing more people in. And with the seniors, you don't have the burden of, of schoolkids. But I, I like having, I like seeing the schoolkids run around and play and, and do all that stuff too.
Well, um, if I could say one more thing?
Yep, go ahead.
I, I do think that some businesses will make a difference in taxes. Because if you look at other towns, it does make a difference. I mean, just the amount that the Dollar General brought in in taxes, one place, was amazing. And I've lived in towns that purposely didn't want business, but then their taxes went out of sight. And you have to allow some of the businesses, so you get the taxes. I mean, we don't need to do what South Windsor is doing with monster places, but uh, we definitely need to get something more. I think Hebron has done a great job of bringing things in, and it really is helping down there.
I do too. And I guess, you know, one of the things that, I don't know if it's concerned or protected and enhanced, but, you know, if we ever had the opportunity to protect, like the post-farm along Route Six, it would be nice to be able to have enough money in our open space fund to uh, to allow us to protect that thing. Because I think it's just a beautiful sight out there. And so that's part to your conservation and, and funding and all that stuff. But uh, but I think, you know, I don't know what, what Dollar General brought in. You know, I didn't hear anything through the budget meetings that I attended on that. I don't know if it's making a big difference to us or not, but uh, I'm sure it helps. I would hate to see. Go ahead, Eric.
It's about, it's about one and a half times the cost of a single child in the elementary school.
Okay. So.
If you had two hundred Dollar Generals, you could pay for your elementarys.
Okay.
They'd probably, they'd probably be happy with that.
The other way you get, if you have more housing and don't keep it to such huge lot, then you get more people that way. You get more taxes that way, too.
And, and, and that's, that's kind of where I think we could go, you know, it's not for, I don't think we would have any impact on the rural pastoral views going through town by building the, you know, little cluster communities, whether it's the, you know, townhouses, or the small lots for individual homes, or whatever. Uh, you know, it took me a long time to stumble into Andover's apartment house. You know, it, it, it is not detrimental to any, any of those things that we all love about Andover. And uh, I think, you know, the couple of places that we're looking at maybe doing a uh, a senior housing development behind the, behind the town hall, or over at the, the transfer station property, you could put that in. And uh, it would not detract a bit from uh, from those things that we love about Andover.
I mean, look at the size lots around the lake. They're all, almost all small lots.
They're, they're smaller than we would.
Very nice community.
Yes, I, I agree. So uh, that was, you know, that was the most important and doable thing that I thought we could do. But uh, you know, certainly, and, and I think this, this list is consistent with uh, what we saw on the surveys. I guess the, the other comment that I would make, that I was a little surprised is, you know, we asked, wherein the priority list is Andover Lake for something that Andover needs to protect. And there were a bunch of comments that came in that Andover Lake's private lake doesn't do anything for Andover. And uh, I think, you know, that, that is not true. It's in, it's in our best interest to keep that lake healthy for as long as we can. Because, you know, the taxes that we bring in from the houses that are, are around it are significant. And uh, it's just, it's a nice facility that draws people to Andover. You know, people want to live here because, because of that lake. So it is, it is good for Andover, even though it's not Andover's lake. It's a private thing there, but. But anyhow, Eric, you had something on that?
Yeah, I just, the, the one thing I haven't really seen that I think you ought to consider is complete streets and continued efforts to make the town walkable and bikeable. And part of the reason is if you're really going to go after affordable housing, a significant fraction of the people who require affordable housing will need to use public transportation. Um, and unless you've made it walkable and bikeable for them to get to public transportation, you kind of have this mismatch. You want affordable housing, and that's an awesome goal to be pursuing as a town. But there's no business, there's no place for them to work in town practically, so they have to go somewhere. So you have to keep that connection so that they can get to where they're going. Um, as far as concerns, I mean, in truth, my biggest long-term concern is the effect of climate change. You know, for a couple of reasons. One, um, I think we're going to have to deal with climate migration in the United States. There's already a lot of evidence that the wealthier population is moving back out of Florida and out of some of the southern areas, which they all flock to in the past. And unfortunately, the people that are, are least mobile are, are the, the lowest income residents in those areas. But we're going to have to accept the fact that there will be a shift in demographic population in the United States, and that is going to affect us. So in, in terms of special about Andover, um, I would say in, over the next ten years, I would think the popularity of the East Coast Greenway i- is going to hopefully mirror that of some of the other really long-distance uh, you know, paths, like the C N O Canal Path, Virginia Creeper Trail and stuff like that, which means it's a real engine for uh, for, you know, business and commerce. So I think that, that's something that we should keep in mind. And that's all I got. Well, actually, I got a lot more, but.
Well, and the homework task was to come with your most important, and that's, you know, why the complete streets wasn't the most important to me, you know, the senior housing is. But certainly, uh, you know, I think the plan that you've got in place is, is, you know, making significant strides there. I, I can't remember how many pieces there are after you get done with what we've already got in the works. But I'm sure there's a few things out there, but uh, great progress on that. And that does enhance, enhance the town there, yep. Jim, do you want to throw in anything there for us? Yeah, you're on mute, so I guess not. I think there's.
I think you've covered everything that I had in my mind.
Yep.
The Hop River is a big plus, post-farm, um, some alternative housing options. Move away from some of this large lot development, I think. Maybe utilize the conservation subdivision as a tool a little more often. Maybe tweak it.
Okay, very good.
Now, I have a concern about the, the demographics. You know, we have an older population, and, you know, there's an effort to, to cater to, to seniors, and that's great. But, I mean, I think at the, that might be at the cost of uh, maybe we have to look at why there are younger families coming in. That's all I got.
Yep. Younger families aren't coming in because they can't afford to, for the most part, you know, there's some of that.
I, yeah, I think I, I muted, I muted Jim again. I think he has the echo.
Yep, that's, that's where the echo is. But, you know, with, with the exception of the natural public, natural affordable housing, and again, we're not talking low-income housing. We're talking about housing that's workforce housing. And the thing I didn't care for for the workforce housing is senior housing. They're not the workforce, but uh, we want to make it so that they can afford to be here. It's uh, you know, they're a good asset to, to our community as well. So anyhow, thanks, thanks, everybody for their input. John, I think that's all we got for you on that particular item.
That's good. I, what I will try to do, um, I'm going to take this, this discussion and, and craft it into a draft vision statement for discussion for our next meeting, because I think that sort of, put, put this into a, a collective statement and, and kind of frame our, our discussion moving forward for, for establishment of goals.
Okay, very good, yep. And, and at some point, I know the Conservation Commission is, is, you know, wanting to give us their two cents on conservation plan going forward, so we can figure out how that fits in. That was that. Next up on the agenda is the approval. That was that. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. And I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from. April sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, Ann. Any discussion? On this? And I have no corrections to the minutes. I was. I'll point out that I was dismayed to see once again. No second on the motion or vote for uh. Adding the item to go to executive session. Last time, uh, I thought, sure, I did that. I went back and watched video and nope, missed it again, so. I'll appeal to each of you folks to keep me honest on making sure that we, you know, make the motions and second and vote. Okay, hearing none, uh. A call for vote, Ann? Leanne?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Scott? And I vote aye as well, the minutes are approved five zero zero. Next up is administrative reports, Jim?
Muted.
And you're muted again.
Sorry, Jim, I keep muting you because I think we have an echo on your line.
Okay. Can you hear me? Am I echoing? Okay. All right, I am working with Connecticut Medication Society to. Complete a an application for a special permit. For their facility on Route six. Um, I'm working with a number of. Property owners that have pulled permits, they have not pulled permits around the lake and um trying to get nutrient allocation plans in place. Did ZBA met last week and a variance was granted for a. A deck along Lake Side Drive. I have initiated conversation with, I believe it's New England Geo. Geotech. Something of that, uh, regarding updating our zoning map are and uh. Hopefully that will go fairly smooth. Um, I did, I did have. A seasonal dwelling issue came come up. Recently, and just for those of you. Who may or may not know, there's there's a handful of homes that are around the lake that have been used seasonally. The regulations are a little vague. It sounds as though there's a seasonal zone. And when a seasonal home comes on the on the market, uh, because it tend to be priced. Relatively low. Um, or or lower than than a a year-round dwelling. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of confusion, um, there's a lot of realtors calling. And this time around, I tried to get up some bring some clarity to it and. Unfortunately, the the town did have a record of what homes were considered seasonal. And those records have seemed to have um. Gone away. So I have to look at them on an individual basis, um. But it seems to be, I think I have a handle on it presently. Training, I did. Do a look into training as uh, everybody probably knows, Clear provides a lot of training. That's required. What I wasn't aware of is they do. They do load up their um. Their classes can be. Watched at any time. And if the town, what I was told is if the town accepts self-certification, they can be used. Towards the trading requirement, so I'll try and I'll try and post those um this week. That's all I have. Any questions?
And can we, what? So what do we know about the difference between a three-season and a four-season home? What and what and is it if you buy a three-season home, is it possible to turn it into?
Okay, yeah, it it's very difficult, um. Right now, the difference is what it's been used for. There's. Under our zoning regulations, we allow uses of right and special permit uses, and under the lake zone. A special permit use includes conversion, but conversion requires adherence to Section eleven two of our regulations, which are the um. The bulk requirements, the dimensional requirements. Which is where most properties fall short. Specifically, anything that's been used seasonally. So they would have, somebody would have to go to to. The zoning board of appeals and seek relief from those particular sections of the of the regulations and um. Quite honestly, there's. I think it might be tough to. To make a hardship. Make a good argument for hardship. What I'd like to do is is try and do an inventory of seasonal homes. I have no idea how many there are, whether there's five or twenty. What I really have to rely on is people, people in the neighborhood that have lived lived here for for some time.
So it's definitely a ZBA. Determination?
Well, it no, it's it's a special permit. The conversion is by special permit. But. Very typically, they, an applicant would need to go to ZBA first. Just. To secure relief from the dimensional requirements. And we're talking, you know, front yard setback, side yard setback, um. Lot size.
Wouldn't special permit go before ZBA?
It's the way the reg reads. No. No, so it would be a two-step process. You would need, I mean, typically you would need to go to ZBA. In order to comply, I mean, to comply with the the requirements of. Of the zoning regs. Or or have a variance. But it still is, I mean, it's still up to the. To the planning and zoning commission. It's still a special permit. Kind kind of like. If you recall the. Application for some. Activity, construction in a in the flood zone, it went to ZBA and then came to. To PCC for the special permit. Uh, the on Handy Road, fifty seven Handy Road. Which was a little controversial.
Hmm, yeah, very convoluted.
Yeah, Scott, the uh. So the size requirement for a seasonal lot is thirty thousand square feet. The year-round lot is sixty thousand square feet. A lot of lots around the lake don't meet either of those, and so, you know. Then then you have to go adjudicate why you're not meeting sixty thousand square feet. Um, asking for an increase in the usage there. Maybe the right answer, and and I'm just uh. You know, taking a guess here. Is we change the uh. Once we get a handle on, I I think there's a. A small number of seasonal houses. But. None of these seasonal houses have the thirty thousand square feet, so you know, they're all the all the lots around here are kind of in violation of what. What the regulation requires, you can almost make it the same.
A lot of them don't have a quarter of that, Jed.
Say again?
A lot of them don't have a, a lot of four-season homes don't have a quarter of that.
Right, and that's why, you know, it bugs me a little bit that, okay, so now. You have to go to the ZBA because your lot's six, not sixty thousand square feet. And. Which your hardship, you know, this is the way the the lake was laid out, uh, you know, there's gotta be something better than than that lot size, uh. If it's commensurate with. Most of the other lot sizes, that shouldn't be a. A roadblock to going out and getting. Getting your house made year-round.
That's my point.
To others.
There's four-season homes there with, you know, six or seven thousand square feet lots.
Yep.
And there's hardly no houses with sixty thousand.
Right.
None.
And so.
Very few.
So I think, you know. Adjusting that graph in in Section eleven. Might be an answer if that was something, you know, that. I don't know what the downside is, you know, somebody could come in with a one thousand square foot lot and say, okay, I want a year-round home. Probably don't want that. There there ought to be some kind of looking at it, but. But the roadblock. That we currently have, you know, shouldn't be there. If you got a a workable septic system and you've got. Heat and and all that stuff, but you ought to be able to have it a year-round house, even though you don't have the sixty thousand square feet.
Exactly, yeah.
So it's.
That's my thoughts.
Yep.
It's good for one, it should be good for the other guy.
It should be. And the question is, how do we write our regulations to uh to get us there? And and whenever we change something, there's always an unintended consequence, and I haven't had enough time to figure out what that is yet, but I'm thinking about.
Um, I have a question?
Go ahead, Leanne.
Scott, were you done?
I I am, Leanne.
Okay, thanks. Um, Jim, have you had any more communication with um Ryan Fitch about that property for sale that was mentioned tonight? Um, in the course of the. Discussion about the future of Andover, and then I think you've mentioned it in the last meeting or two. Have you um? Had any communication with him since our last meeting?
Jim, you're muted.
No. Was that question for Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Unless you have, John, or maybe it was you, John, I thought.
I have not.
Yeah, we uh, so we we haven't, we haven't had. Eric and I met with him a couple of weeks ago. And he was gonna give me some thoughts, and I'm sorry, Jim, I'm gonna mute you again. Um, sorry, there there's just that echo. Um, he, we gave him some some thoughts, um, some references to the regulations about potential paths he could take for for development. Options if they were looking to develop themselves as opposed to just put it on the market and sell. Um, I I they put it on the market for a fairly high price, and I think they're just gonna see what they get. But um, I think they're also, you know, discussing internally. If they want to consider sort of leading, uh, leading a redevelopment of their own property. Um, but we haven't heard back from that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, Jim had gotten one inquiry from uh. You know, a potential buyer and it it didn't pan out for anything, but so he did get. Somebody called him and uh. I guess that's one of uh. One of the thoughts that, do we really have a interested buyer for the gravel pit and? Nobody's been over asking Jim any questions, and that's normally the first sign that there's some real interest. Okay, uh, John, so it's uh, it's time for your. Report, if you've got anything for us here.
Sure, uh, just two quick things. Um, first. Uh, in addition to our conversation with um. Uh, Fitch, um, I'd also had a couple of conversations on the phone with Keith Grimaldi. Um, about his property, um. That sort of runs Route six near near eighty-seven. Um. And after, you know, sort of. Leaving that that property kind of fallow and and um. His sort of development plans had kind of fallen fallen, um, you know, vacant for a while. Uh, he's decided he's gonna put it on the market, and there may already be a sign there. I'm not sure if it it is, um. But um, we've also encouraged him to come in or have a Zoom meeting with with Jed and Eric and myself to just talk about options. Not necessarily convincing him to stay and try again, but just to better understand. Um, what, you know, we and the current, you know, alignment of the regulations feel is possible. There, um, so that could potentially help his decision-making or to help his marketing of the property. So we're 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 reaching out to him and hopefully can get him into a meeting sooner than later. Um, I think he's. Uh, you know, he's a he's a builder elsewhere in the state, and so it's pretty busy, but um, we're we're gonna try to get him in the meeting. Um, so that's number one. Number two is just as a heads up. Um, this is, I think, our first meeting since. The legislative session ended, um. The uh. There was an interesting bill passed, um. There there was many, many proposals relative to local zoning and housing. Um, basically, all of them died, except for one, um, Bill, uh, Bill fifty-four seventy-four. Um, which passed both houses and is awaiting the governor's signature. Which does, among other things, um. Allows for nursing homes to be converted, uh, vacant nursing homes, underused nursing homes, to be converted as a right to multifamily. I don't, I don't know that that really affects Andover particularly. Um, but that is, you know, it, I think it's a change that signals plenty that that the. The Connecticut General Assembly is trying to find ways to to. Turn the dial a little bit on increased housing production, um, and sort of taking it from a redevelopment standpoint, so. That bill changed, so if there's any. Nursing homes kicking around town that that are underused, um, they could, they could be quickly converted to multifamily. So that's just an update.
Okay, thanks, John. I do want to circle back to Jim one more time. The it's it's probably worth you mentioning, Jim, the uh. Activity by you and the Wetlands agent out there at Pine Ridge uh. Drive and where we stand on on that, uh. I guess complaint, if you will. Jim?
Okay, there were some client issues involving erosion, sedimentation control, and some silitation was was leaving the site, some some. Um, stack piles of soil were. Were located off-site. And. Joe and I both met with with the builder. It's a single-family home, it's George Correa. And he is in the process of of making corrections. Uh, we were out there today and he's he's made some substantial. Progress, um, and I intend to. Get back, get back there tomorrow or or be in touch with him and. Updated with what I what I see need still be done. And that's it.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Jim. Next up is inland wetlands water course, and and I've got nothing to report other than that, uh. You know, the what Jim just talked about out there on Pine Ridge was, uh. It appeared to be a pretty significant violation, uh. And uh. You know, we we uh. We as a town need to continue to keep our fingers in the pie, uh. You know, up until probably the certificate of occupancy or whatever gets done because. You know, I had lost track of, uh, I figured the houses were all built out there and people were living in them by now. Obviously, not true, so uh. So we need to keep every now and then going out and and taking a look at at these different projects that we got going on. Next up is a commission discussion. Any other things that uh? We uh. Ought to be talking about tonight and haven't? Okay, move on to uh. Close cousin is miscellaneous. I got nothing there either. Any public comment? And I don't see anybody here for that. Date of the next regular scheduled meeting is June eighteenth, uh. Looking to see if Eric's still here. He may have taken off, uh, I was gonna ask him if we'd be in the new uh. Community center by then, um. It'll be close. If the community center's ready to have a meeting, we'll we'll have it there. Uh, hybrid, uh, otherwise we'll.
They've, uh, I think they're planning on about the second week of July. For a grand opening at the community center.
Okay, very good, um. So we'll meet uh, meet online again uh on June eighteenth. And I didn't check my calendar, but I'm assuming June eighteenth is the right date there.
We're going to have a punch list in a couple of weeks for the building. And then. Hopefully it'll be done by that time period.
Super. That sounds good. Any other comments before we make a motion to adjourn? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, got Scott down for seconding that. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to adjourn passes five zero zero. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your participation tonight. It was kind of long winded on the gravel pit, but I I think. The path we've chosen might not be the quickest, but it's a good one, so. Thank you for your help coming up with that and we'll see everybody in June. Good night, everybody.